October 2023. I'm Beth Thomas, Mayor of Glenorkie and Chairperson of this afternoon's council meeting. Glenorkie City Council acknowledges the Moanina people as the traditional owners of this land. While sadly the Moanina people did not survive colonisation, we recognise all Tasmanian Aboriginal people as the original owners and continuing custodians of the land and waters of this island, Lutra Witter. We pay our respect to Aboriginal elders past and present and commit to working for a city that welcomes and respects all Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. Joining me here in council chambers is Deputy Mayor Su Hiki, Alderman Dan Dunsey, councillor Molly Kendall, councillor Harry Quick, Alderman Russell Yaxley, Alderman Shane Alderton, Alderman Josh Cockshott, Alderman Stuart Slade and Alderman Stephen King and Councilor General Manager Tony McMullin. Before we open our agenda, I take this opportunity to make a statement about workplace health and safety. Glenorkie City Council takes workplace health and safety seriously, and this includes physical and psychological safety. We have a duty to ensure that a safe workplace is provided for our employees, elected members, contractors, volunteers and members of the public who are present at councils' workplaces. Council meetings form part of councils' workplace and it's expected that everyone who attends council meetings will behave in a polite and respectful manner. Council has endorsed a statement of intent setting out how we, as elected members, have agreed to conduct ourselves in representing the people of Glenorkie. In accordance with this, any disagreement should be expressed respectfully, remembering both during debate and in decision-making that we are elected to represent and serve the people of Glenorkie and to make our city the best it can be. I note the open section of this meeting is being livestreamed and an audiovisual recording of the meeting will occur in accordance with council's recording of council meetings policy. Members of the public are not permitted to make their own audiovisual recordings of council meetings. We have 20 items on our agenda this afternoon and agenda item one is apologies and we have no apologies this afternoon. Agenda item two is confirmation of minutes of the open meeting. Do I have someone to move at the minutes of the council meeting held on 25th of September? Be confirmed, move. Alderman Slade, seconded Alderman King, any discussion Alderman Slade?
No, me.
Any discussion around the table? Happy for me to put the vote. I'll put the motion to the vote, please raise your hand if you are for, that's carried unanimously. Item three is announcements by the Chair. I wish to take a few moments to address the meeting regarding the Glenorkie War Memorial Pool, anticipating that some members of the public here this afternoon may have questions regarding the pool. As council has made the community aware, the pool will be closed for the foreseeable future following an independent condition assessment that identified a number of significant safety issues with the assets within the facility that pose an intolerable risk to public safety. Council acknowledges that people are feeling upset and angry about this. As I have noted before, this was not something council expected to have to do this year. It is not something council wanted to do. While we acknowledge it makes it no easy to accept, the facts are that the council had little choice. Council is now undertaking a project to fully investigate redevelopment options and associated costs and will consult with the community before coming to a decision on the future of the pool and the site. We know the recreational and health benefits of aquatic facilities. We now need to understand the cost to council and the ratepayer across the life of a new facility and ask what the ratepayer is prepared to pay for the provision of a pool. The project we are now embarking on will include generation of options for aquating and other recreational facilities in consultation with the community and stakeholders, preparation of concept designs for shortlisted options, preparation of whole-of-life strategic costs and benefits, including capital and operating costs and site preparation, and exploration of funding options. The state government has provided $200,000 funding to support this piece of work. The tender for a consultant to undertake this work was advertised on 8th of October with submissions closing on the 8th of November. The project is expected to be completed in the first half of 2024 and we will keep the community informed of engagement opportunities and progress along the way. Council recently held a community yarn where we again explained and answered questions about how we have arrived at this point, what we are doing to address it and how the community can be involved in the process into 2024. The minutes from last week's community yarn in a full transcript are available on council's website under the Let's Talk section. I also encourage interested community members to view the Glenorkie Pool page on council's website, which holds all of the consultant reports, council reports, frequently asked questions and public question time questions and answers about the pool. Once again, council acknowledges people feel strongly about the pool and we want to be assured and want to be assured of the future of the facility. What we can assure you is that we are working as hard and as fast as possible on the future of the facility. I urge you to participate in the consultation and engagement process as part of the project and look forward to hearing your wishes and ideas for the future of this much-loved recreational facility. On behalf of elected members, I assure the community that council wants to achieve the best outcome for the community, for the future of the pool site and to work with the community in achieving it. Item four is pecuniary interest notification. Do any elected members or staff have any pecuniary interests this afternoon? Alderman Yaxley?
Yes, I do, and item 12.
Item 12? Thank you Alderman Yaxley, I'll note you have an interest in that item. I also have an interest in item 12.
Item 10.
Item 10, Director Richardson, thank you. I'll note that and we will leave the meeting at those times. No other interests to declare. We will move on then to item five, responses to previous public questions taken on notice. We had questions without notice from Paul Camden of Clermont in relation to the development application for 8 to 10 Main Road, Clermont, and the questions and answers are provided in the agenda. Similar for questions from Ms Pauline Elliott of Clermont. Again, the questions and answers are in the agenda. And David Conkey on the same matter as well. We also had questions without notice from Ms Janice Bryan of Montrose in relation to the sale of the Durin Entertainment Centre and proceeds of property disposal policy. Again, the answers included in the agenda. Item six is public question time. So I'll just read out a statement and the rules in relation to public question time before we proceed. So this is an ordinary meeting of the council for the purpose of elected members debating and deciding on council business. In accordance with Local Government Meeting Procedures Regulations, council will allocate 15 minutes during each council meeting to invite members of the public to ask questions relating to the activities of council. Council's full policy is stated in the agenda, but I'd like to bring your attention to the following rules. Members of the public are to announce their name and residential address before asking a question, which will be recorded in the minutes. Questions are to be put succinctly and in the form of a question, not a comment or statement. Questions must not be inflammatory, abusive, defamatory, contain a personal attack or otherwise breach any rules of the meeting, which have been explained by myself as chairperson. As chairperson, I may limit the number of questions asked by each member of the public in order to ensure that all members of the public wishing to ask questions are given the opportunity within the allocated time. As per this policy, as Chair, I'll limit each participant to two questions each and allow two minutes to ask a question, remembering it is question time, not time for commentary or debate. As chairperson, I have a responsibility to make a safe environment for elected members and for council staff. I have tried to accommodate the impassioned participation by members of the public in recent meetings as much as possible. However, there has been some concern over adherence to the public question time rules. As a member of the public, if you are asking a question, you are responsible for ensuring your conduct adheres to these rules. I will not tolerate behaviour that contravenes these rules and any person who behaves otherwise will be asked to leave the meeting. I appreciate your cooperation to ensure an orderly meeting and safe workplace environment. So, do members of the public have any questions this evening? Ms Stirk?
Hi, my name is Angela Stirk, I live in Rosetta, in Walker Street. My question relates to the document active Glenorkie 2040, which shows that the pool is an established part of Glenorkie infrastructure. Up until 2040, the document was designed and put forward in 2021 with public consultation. My question is, why is council refusing to hold an official public meeting as stipulated in the Local Government Act to consult with its constituents regarding the process to come to tendering? Given that a yarn and a pop-up event at Northgate or at the Munna Arts Centre, delegating 45 minutes to discuss the disposal of the asset possibly is not sufficient. And it was obvious from the October 17th yarn that questions remain unanswered. So my question is simply, has no bearing on your process or the outcome of the tender now, why will you not meet with your constituents through an official public meeting that's advertised in a newspaper, opening up to more thorough debate and discussion? So some of this anger and perhaps confusion can be dispelled.
Thank you, Ms Stirk, I'll take that question on notice.
Okay, my second question is, can you name at least two funds that the Glenorkie City Council has invested the Durin Entertainment Centre money in? And what is their interest rate return for council?
I'll take that one on notice, thank you, Ms Stirk. Ms Bryan?
Janice Bryan, 14 England Avenue, Montrose. I've just got a tiny bit of preamble before the question. Council's community goals from the Community Plan Strategic and Annual Plan 2023 to 24 include: Making lives better. Council's role is to advocate for and work with others to improve the daily lives of people in our city. Leading our community. Council exists to represent the best interests of the people of Glenorkie, working together to manage community resources and further community priorities. And we all know what our priority is at the moment. Our community values, and this one more, our social, recreational and cultural facilities, events and experiences will attract and retain people in Glenorkie to share our wonderful way of life. Is any of this true? Okay, I'll move on to my questions. In addition to the community's increasing anger about the Glenorkie War Memorial Pool and the continuing loss of community land, assets and facilities, there is anger about the 6 million YMCA redevelopment announced in 2019. As Glenorkie City Council now holds the title to the YMCA property, previously acquired by State Growth in September 2017, before the grant was announced, could you please provide information to the community about the redevelopment and whether there will be a continuation of YMCA programmes for the community?
Thank you, Ms Bryan, I'll take that on notice.
You can't answer that one?
I can't answer that one right now.
That's very interesting. Number two, can you explain how the 5.25 million YMCA development application was approved by planning officers without being authorised by the delegated Glenorkie Planning Authority when the delegation stated a limit of $1 million at the time? And we know it's now $2 million. But how did that application get passed without going through the Glenorkie Planning Authority?
Thank you, Ms Bryan. A discretionary application for alterations and additions to the Glenorkie YMCA became valid on 1st of June 2023. It was advertised from the 6th to the 19th of September 2023. The 42-day statutory time limit in which to make a decision expired on 24th of September 2023. An extension of time request for the matter to be decided at the next Glenorkie Planning Authority meeting, which was on Monday 2nd of October 2023, was declined by the applicant on the 5th of September and therefore the application was decided under delegation by the senior statutory planner on 22nd of September. Under the delegations that existed both pre and post the 25th of September council meeting, senior planning officers were delegated the power to determine applications for discretionary permits under a number of circumstances, one of which being if the time in which the planning authority must grant or refuse a permit will expire prior to the next scheduled meeting of the Glenorkie Planning Authority and the applicant has refused to grant an extension to that time period.
Well...
No, this is not time for debate, Ms Bryan, please return to your seat.
I'll do that, that was deceptive at the meeting when the decision was discussed.
Ms Bryan, please return to your seat.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Mr Camden was next, sorry.
I'm sorry, you want to go ahead?
Mine's very short, anyway. Thank you.
Paul Camden, Main Road, Clermont, in relation to 8 to 10 Main Road. In relation to the response for question two from Pauline Elliott in the September meeting, council said an assessment report has been provided and will be assessed against the provisions of this code. The report was clearly written for Cooper Automotive and on page 33 of the report said solely for use by the client and EM and C accepts no responsibility for its use by other parties. Now that the council is prepared to accept a report where the authors accept no responsibility for what is written, then will council accept responsibility and liability for what is written in the report, given it has accepted it?
Take that on notice, I'll take that on notice, thank you, Mr Camden.
And second question, last question. If the council doesn't accept, and it's provision on the response to question one, the council doesn't accept responsibility for what is written in the ESA report, then whom bears professional responsibility and liability for what is written, given the authors specify do not accept responsibility? Thank you.
Take that on notice too, thank you, Mr Camden. If members of the public have copies of questions, it would be really appreciated if you could hand them in or email them through to us as well. You can hand them to David in the pink shirt at the back or email them through to us. Thank you, it would really help for the transcript. Ms Crew?
Mayor Thomas, my question is to the council itself. And I'd like to start off by saying, why have you failed the people of Glenorkie? Ergo, the definition of local government governance is, quote, "It involves the ways in which the elected members and staff are accountable to the community", unquote. And why was your pre and post-election promise of transparency not being kept? After much consultation with various groups in the community, the general consensus is for a vote of no confidence in this council and for the community to seek restitution in tort via the legal system, for mismanagement of our assets and for the flagrant abuse of power vested in yourselves by the people, for the people. For the record, legal precedent has been established in Australia apropos the aforementioned action. So that's my first question. And my second question is, I'd like some clarity on the issue of the commercial kitchen at MCOT. How much is it costing and where is that funding coming from? And why is that a priority?
I'll, we can probably answer that one. Can we, General Manager, I don't have the specifics in front of me, but I know part of the project is federally funded. It was $100,000 federal government funding for that project through the last federal election that was committed. And certainly the project is underway, council is making a contribution as well.
And the Tasmanian Community Fund is also funded to the tune of about $60,000 off the top of my head.
Well, I'm pretty involved with MCOT, but I happened to be away at the time of the AGM. But I'm told, well, I know that it was supposed to have been done last February. And now you say that you're awaiting federal funding and it will probably be done this February, February 2024. So, you know, that...
The funding was committed through the last federal election period. So there is, it takes some time between the funding being committed through a federal election process. Then even though the funding's been committed, council has to go through an application process and be sent, provided a confirmation of the funding commitment and then a grant deed for signing before actually any funding is forthcoming. So there is sometimes quite a lag because the federal department, the exchange between our bureaucracy and the federal government's bureaucracy takes time for that funding to come through. So certainly the project is underway now and is a priority for council and for the multicultural hub as a facility. It certainly will help the MCOT organisation to generate revenue. And from a council perspective, having a commercial kitchen in that facility provides opportunity for people from the community and from a range of different cultures to celebrate and live that culture through use of that facility.
Thanks for clarifying that. My first question about transparency, if you could address that.
So could you just clarify for me really succinctly what your question was?
My first question was about transparency. I think the pool is a great example of how you haven't been transparent. You know, we hear all these different...
What's your actual question though? What's your question?
Well, it's pretty obvious that you haven't been transparent.
It's not a question, Ms Crew. If you can phrase it as a question, I might be a better place to answer.
Well, it is a question. You haven't been transparent and what is your agenda?
So we have no, absolutely no agenda in terms of the pool. Well, we do have an agenda. Our agenda is that we are seeking to undertake this process to investigate all options for the redevelopment of the pool site, as I quite clearly stated in my announcements by the Chair. The closure of the pool was not something council expected to have to do this year. It is not something we wanted to do. We had already planned to undertake this project to look at the options for the future of the site, knowing that the pool was well past the end of its useful life. And unfortunately, the condition report that came back was worse than we expected, which meant unfortunately we had to close the pool because we cannot risk public safety and we are committing, embarking on this project to look at the future in consultation with the community as quickly as possible.
Okay, I think our problem is like there's a bit of...
This is not time for debate, so Ms Crew, thank you.
Okay, well, I'd like to engage you...
I'm happy to meet with you, happy to meet with you anytime. Yes, come forward, please state your name and address for the minutes.
Hello, council. My name is Michelle Smith and I live in West Munna. My questions today are going to be about Macca's. So my first question is, have McDonald's given the council the requested information from the planning team as of yet?
My understanding is no, we have not yet received a response to our request for further information. Is that right, General Manager?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
Nice.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is, in the response to the questions last week, you gave poll the maximum five-year time limit that they have, but we were wondering what is the typical or average time that people normally respond in these situations?
Not sure, General Manager?
Through you, Mayor. It's really up to the applicant, the ball's in the applicant's court to respond to the further information requirement from the council. As has been previously said to council meetings, there is a statutory limit of five years, but obviously that's a very long time and generally we expect applicants to get back much quicker, much more quickly than that. But it is in the applicant's hands at this stage.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms Smith. Mr College, come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas, from councils. My name is Ron College, I'm from 14 Pasco Avenue, Clermont. My question is in relation to 8 to 10 Main Road, Clermont. At previous meetings, we've been told by the manager and the mayor that the council could not refuse the application from McDonald's due to a ruling in the State Government Planning Act stating the application had to be accepted and considered. Would you please tell me where in the State Planning Act this is stated?
Thank you, Mr College, do you want to answer that one, General Manager, or take a notice?
Through you, Mayor. We've previously provided chapter and verse in response to questions on this. Section 43A and section 40T are the relevant parts of the act that we rely upon to assess those applications.
I've read that act and I can't see where it says you must accept it. It says you may accept it.
I have no response to that other than to say that we've got a duty to consider applications that are put to us and requests that are put to us.
It's not the way it reads in the act.
Well, through you, Mayor, just, it's not the... I would put a rhetorical question, which is, can you show me the power to refuse it?
Why must it be accepted? It's against the Planning Act. It's, the planning is not for commercial use.
So, as I said, section 43A and section 40T of the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act 1993 provide for a person to make a request to the council and logic, a planning permit application at the same time and an application that would rely upon, allow me to finish please, that would rely upon a change to the planning scheme. That is exactly what McDonald's have sought to do with this particular proposal and council is assessing that application under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act.
The only thing is that in the past, we've been told that that must be accepted due to the planning.
This is not a time for debate, unfortunately, Mr College. So happy to have this conversation with you offline and perhaps also suggest that, you know, we have provided, as the General Manager has said, chapter and verse response to these types of questions. If community members continue not to accept council's advice, I would suggest they get their own independent legal advice or take it up with the Tasmanian Planning Commission or Director for Local Government.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward.
Hello. My name is Tracy Smith, I live in Northern Circle in Glenorkie. My question is, Belgravia, I believe, were the authority that were looking after the pool before the pool was closed. And I also believe they were on a three-year contract. I just want to make sure that we are not stuck with paying them for another two years to look after the pool when we don't have the pool open.
Thank you, Ms Smith, we are not. There was certainly a clause in the contract that enabled council to end that, terminate that contract without a clause or without paying further money to Belgravia. That's right, General Manager?
That's my understanding.
Acting Director, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, there's a clause in there that if the pool is available, we will go away.
Thank you, thank you, Ms Smith. Any further questions from members of the public?
Good afternoon, I'm Eddie Steenburgen and I live in Marys Opera, Rosetta. My two questions are related to workshops that council has helped since its last meeting. I'd just like to understand a little bit more about them. One of them is a workshop related to one-on-one conversational session. What was the purpose of that workshop?
Council takes the opportunity around quarterly to have a one-on-one catch-up with the General Manager. Obviously, it is an important function of the council to manage the performance of the General Manager and we certainly find it a very useful exercise to have that open frank dialogue with the General Manager of any items in council's annual plan or related to the General Manager's key performance indicators. And that's what that workshop was.
Good, thank you. The second workshop I'm interested in relates to how about Northern Suburbs Rail Action Group? What was the purpose of that workshop?
The Northern Suburbs Rail Action Group requested to present to a council, to present to council on their view on the proposed activation of the Northern Suburbs Transit Corridor. And so they had the opportunity in a half an hour workshop to present to us on their vision and to take questions from elected members about that.
So that workshop was initiated by a group? Good afternoon.
It was half an hour.
Since I'm the last one, can I quick answer a question?
Oh, Mrs Steenburgen, they were very quick questions and answers, so I will allow you one more. Give us quick.
Thank you. This question relates to the updated disposal of council land policy that's coming up tonight. And I'm not sure I understand one aspect of it. Although the term dispose can mean all sorts of things like sell, exchange, et cetera, all the content only talks about selling. It doesn't refer to leasing or any other form of disposal. I'm wondering why that is.
Thank you, Mr Steenburgen. My initial response would be that perhaps a lot of the policy is geared around the actual proceeds of disposal. So obviously, we really only gain significant proceeds that can be expended on community projects through a sale of council assets. that can be expended on community projects through a sale of council assets. So therefore, that's perhaps why sale is referred to, hmm, you know, a lot through the document because the policy is um, a key function of the policy is to set council's direction in terms of the actual use of funds that are obtained through disposal of council land by way of sale. But uh, do you have anything to add to that, General Manager?
Uh, through you, Mayor. The um, the act makes it very clear that um, council can dispose of land by by less longer than five years by sale or by uh gift.
Or exchange?
Or exchange, that's correct.
Just clarify, what I'm getting at is this sort of apparent contradiction between a policy which claims to cover all disposals, but which only talks about sales. Does that mean the policy does not apply to leasing and other forms of disposal?
Uh, I would have to take that on notice, I think, Mr Steenburgen. Unless you have another answer, General Manager?
Essentially.
Or Acting Director?
Essentially, Mayor, the major, the major action is around the sale. So the the um, we've had, clearly had a recent uh, recent one-off in terms of Rothsay Circle with a, with a um, a gifting of land. Um, in terms of the lease, uh, leasing of land, uh, largely, you know, we've had situations, we've had leases, but the the majority of the action is really around sale of land. If council is going to dispose of land, it's generally to um, to sell land. But we would, having said that, we would still apply the same sort of principles to, uh, we'd be still following the policy guidance in relation to other forms of disposal.
I would also, uh, sorry, I would also, yeah, I'm not, I'm certainly reading through it. It do- it does refer to uh disposed of a lot of the time. Um, and it does clearly say in the definitions, dispose means include sell, lease, donate, exchange or otherwise dispose of, and disposal has the corresponding meaning. Uh, it does, through most sections, talk about disposal generally rather than sale. Do you have anything to add, Acting Director?
Uh, yeah, just, there's, there's, there's two policies. Uh, one is the disposal of council air policy, which is what's here tonight, which really sets out the project following disposing of land. Um, as the air points out, if one quickly does have a definition of disposing, including sell, lease, donate, exchange, uh, including disposals, the um, the proceeds of public disposal is a, is different policy, which is where those proceeds go to, which I believe that General Manager referred to. Uh, that's, that is largely around sales, we're on any um, sale or any of that reserves accounts. So that, that particular policy is, I've asked, it's uh, that's the. Okay, certainly disposal, as per the act, is, yeah, those things, something over five years, sell, exchange.
Okay. Well, my final question relates to the Goulunoki Pool site. Can council rule out any sale or long-term lease of that land um as a result of whatever decision it makes on about that site?
Sorry, you'll have to repeat that. I was distracted because you have now had four questions, Mr Steenburgen. So I'm very much bending the rules, which won't go down well with other members of the public here.
This is a yes, no. Can council rule out the sale or long-term lease of the land on which Goulunoki Pool sits?
Council is open-minded at this time to all possibilities and will be guided by the community feedback, uh, which is a really important pro- part of the project we are undertaking to explore options for the future of the site.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, that has exhausted our fifteen minutes of public question time. If any other members of the public have any final burning questions, I will be have to extend to five minutes. Thank you, everybody, for your respectful participation this afternoon. It is greatly appreciated. Item seven is petitions or deputations. We don't have any to note, General Manager?
No, it's fine.
Item eight is activities of the mayor. We have a recommendation that council receive and note the report about, receive, sorry, the report about the activities of Mayor Thomas during the period eighteenth of September to twenty-second of October. Do I have someone to move this? Move Alderman Alderton, seconded Alderman King. Alderman Alderton, any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, um, once again, I see you've been very busy in the community, um, participating in many events and meeting with many um, rate pires and citizens. And I'm just curious, Mr Eddie Steenburgen is a very positive member of the community who comes here and asks a lot of questions. Uh, you met with him on both the twenty-seventh of September and the tenth, I think, of October to discuss traffic calming and general matters. Are you able to share anything with us in regards to your meeting with Mr Steenburgen?
Uh, certainly. I'm sure Mr Steenburgen won't mind me saying that he uh took a keen interest in council's traffic calming policy and had a number of questions in relation to that policy. So uh, we took the opportunity to meet with him and with the director of infrastructure and works, Director Rialy, and also our traffic engineer, Emily Birch, who had had some correspondence um on, on the policy and just helped to actually get in the room and have a two-way conversation to clarify some of the things in relation to that policy. Um, in relation to the other general catch-up, uh, Mr Steenburgen obviously takes a really keen interest in council matters. And as I have made clear to, to members of the public, I'm more than happy uh to meet with members of the public to hear their ideas and suggestions um and to answer any questions that they have from time to time. And um, Mr Steenburgen kindly takes up that offer regularly to keep on track with what's going on.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Yep. Are you happy for me to put the motion to the vote? Alderman Alderton, yes, I'll put the motion. Please raise your hand if you're for. Let's carry unanimously. Item nine is community and volunteer awards. We have a recommendation that council receive and note the attached report on the trial combined annual community and volunteer award ceremony, approve the holding of a second combined annual community and volunteer award ceremony during National Volunteer Week in May twenty twenty-four, and endorse the continuation of Goulunoki Citizen of the Year, Young Citizen of the Year, Senior Citizen of the Year, Local Hero Awards, Sports Achievement Award and Businessperson of the Year award categories for that ceremony. Do I have a mover?
Oh, it's an alternative motion.
Alderman Dunsby, what is your alternative?
I just want to delay this report until next month. So I'm happy to give the reasons now, but that's what would be my alternative motion. This report comes before council next, delayed to the next council meeting.
Um, is that, is that a procedural motion or is that an actual alternative motion? Procedural, just clarify that in the uh meeting procedure regulations. Thank you, General Manager.
Just the matter being deferred is a um, is a procedural motion.
Uh, so it needs a seconder?
Okay. Uh, I believe the Chair may allow a procedural motion without a seconder. There is a second, so.
But it doesn't get just, uh, my understanding is it doesn't get debated. It's just put to the vote. Is that right?
Okay.
Yep. So that the matter be deferred, I would like a secondary for it. So, oh, sorry, um, Alderman Dunsby. And I accept that before we actually discuss it then, I guess, yeah. And seconded Alderman Alderton.
No discussion.
Uh, no discussion. I will put the procedural motion to the vote. If you are for, please raise your hand. That's Alderman Dunsby, Deputy Mayor Hickey, and Alderman Alderton and Councillor Quick. Sorry, did you, Aldo- sorry, just let me be clear on this. Alderman Alderton, Alderman Dunsby, Alderman King and Councillor Quick.
Can I go? Hold on, hold on. Are we voting on to defer it now?
To defer it, yeah. So, so voting for to defer it, if you, yeah. Uh, Alderman Cockshut. So that is one, two, three, four, five.
Six.
Six.
Dunsby, Ald- uh, Deputy Mayor, did you vote for it? Sorry.
So the matter is.
Yeah, so the matter is defer, uh, against. That is Alderman Yaxley, Alderman Slade, Mayor Thomas. Are you abstaining? That's a vote in the know.
I guess so. I've never been in this situation before. It's hard to know what the implications are, so I'm not sure.
Well, it's either, either you want the matter deferred or you want the opportunity to debate the motion tonight and decide on it.
Okay, cool. Yeah, it's um, it's hard to say because I don't know if there's any implications of deferring it operationally.
Yes, yeah, would have been good to discuss it previously. So uh, Alderman Yaxley, one Alderman Slade. And you just abstain, Councillor Kendall?
Yep.
Okay, so the motion to defer is carried. And we will move on. Item ten, Tasmanian Community Fund Grant Opportunity Community Program Youth Engagement. We have a recommendation that council note the Tasmanian Community Fund's grant program to deliver supported projects that remove barriers to enable eight-to-nineteen-year-olds to stay engaged with and connected to learning with a significant opportunity for funding of up to one million dollars with a ten percent cash co-contribution over five to seven years. Authorize submission of an expression of interest to the Tasmanian Community Fund to progress the design of a suitable project in consultation with the community and other partners. And note that if the EOI is successful, officers would progress the project design and re-submit it to council for consideration before it becomes a formal application to the Tasmanian Community Fund. Do I have someone to move this as a motion? Move Alderman King. Someone to second. Alderman Slade, Alderman King.
I support this. I support this, Mayor. I think as it says there, that it's going to come back to us when we get to that point, so let's see how we go.
Thank you, Alderman King. Any further discussion? Alderman Alderton?
Yes, I have a question, Mayor. Are council reading through this um proposal that states potentially that grants are available from one hundred thousand up to one million dollars over a five-to-seven-year period with a required cash co-contribution of ten, ten percent? Does that mean as a council, we are actually locked into, if we receive a grant for one million dollars, are we automatically locked into contributing a hundred thousand dollars towards that grant?
Uh, thank you. Um, General Manager, do you know the answer to that?
No, I'm only aware of that there's a ten percent co-contribution. We would um clearly seek to negotiate on that, but I'm not sure what the freedom to move is.
Yeah, I would also imagine that we would seek co-contribution potentially from other partner organizations through that process. Um, and I would expect that that's something that will further be explored as we go through the next stages of this process.
Just in regards to making a decision here tonight, whether one supports this motion or not, it would be of great interest to an elected member to know if we are actually locked into um committing to ten percent rather than maybe being committed to ten percent.
So as point three, recommendation three says, if the EOI is successful, officers would progress the project design and re-submit it to council for consideration before it becomes a formal application to the Tasmanian Community Fund. So certainly we are not locking council into making an application at this stage. So we are certainly not locking council into any co-contribution at this stage either.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman King, our Slade.
Yeah, Mayor, look, um, any, the Tasmanian Community Fund as a grant is, is a good thing to get hold of. Uh, this is certainly an area which, um, we've been through a workshop discussed. There is certainly some shortfalls in the area that we need to address. Uh, whether or not it needs to be addressed as a council, whether or not it needs to be addressed as a facilitator or where we fit into this. Um, I know that'll come back in relation to when the final document is. Uh, it does say very clearly that there is a contribution there of ten percent. It doesn't say council. It just says cash, but um, again, that's, that's a hundred thousand dollars. So again, I will look to see where that fits into coming back as well. But uh, as the uh recommendation stands and what the council's commitments are at this stage, I feel confident. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Slade. Deputy Mayor.
Um, my view is, thank you, Mayor, that um, this is literally just an authorization to consider an expression of interest to the Tasmanian Community Fund. Given that we have this enormous social issue um with eight-to-nineteen-year-olds and even if we are committed to the hundred thousand dollars, which of course we will discuss in great detail should we get that next step, it is over a five-to-seven-year period. And we're talking a significant fund to plug yet another gap from a state government, um, not, and federal government not doing their parts in education or in social services or whatever it is. It falls, tumbles all the way down to local government to try and pick up the pieces of these children who are so disengaged from society, um, policing, schooling, jobs, whatever. It's, it's a broken system and if we have to do our bit to help patch, um, we, in this particular manner, we will be helping, you know, a generation of kids. So as much as I think it's not the role of local government, I also think if we have an opportunity to contribute and be a facilitator, as Alderman Slade said, in patching together a group or a system or a program that can um re-engage kids and stop them from offending, stop them from being public nuisances, stop them from wasting their lives, stop them getting into trouble with drugs or police, then it's a social obligation on us. And I think the very least we can do is have another go at um a submission of, of interest to the Tasmanian Community Fund to see whether or not we can play a part in breaking this cycle that is affecting communities and particularly our community. So I fully support it. As I say, it's only a step on a, on a rung-on ladder at this stage, but we do have to, as a social conscience, consider it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, Councillor Quick?
Uh, I'm really interested in what the expression of interest contains. Are we going to have it detailed? Uh, you know, these are the projects that we're going to be involved in and how much each are costing? And the number of staff in Goulunoki Council that are going to be involved in these various projects? How are we going to liaise with the Education Department? How are we going to liaise with the NGOs down the road who are doing the same thing? I'd hate to see us get entangled in this rather nebulous proposal without some real clear guidelines, costing and involvement of our, our staff. You know, I mean, eight-to-nineteen is a huge range. You know, are we going to be talking juvenile justice and the police that are involved as well? That identify families at risk? Uh, you know, before we commit, I'd like to, you know, whether we defer this tonight and, you know, and provide, you know, we have some sort of workshop to explain exactly what expression of interest involves rather than giving a blank check.
Uh, thank you, Councillor Quick. Just to clarify, we are only voting on making an expression of interest. So we are not um making a, an application with specific projects at this time. The, the way the Tasmanian Community Fund applications now is that there is an initial expression of interest process where you give a broad overview of the objectives you are trying to achieve through seeking grant funding. Not necessarily the specific um how you are going to do that, so, uh, and who you're going to work with. And we have had one workshop where we did, as you know, throw around some ideas and um provide feedback. And we certainly will have the opportunity to do that again.
So, so what is the timeframe? If we say, yes, as a council, we are interested in submitting an expression of interest, you know, what is the timeframe?
November next year.
And how detailed is our expression of interest?
Yep, so we have until November. If the Tasmanian Community Fund comes back and says to us, yes, we are interested in you putting in a full application based on what you've told us, the broad parameters, we have until November next year to submit that full application. So we've got a full year to work with community partners, to workshop with council, to seek community feedback from young people as well as families and schools and the police, the justice system, um, to seek their feedback on how we work together on this initiative. So certainly we have that twelve-month period to firm up what it looks like.
So is this available to five councils in the Greater Hobart area or just to us?
Uh, my understanding is the fund is open to a whole range.
Anybody, anybody.
Yeah. Yep. Alderman Alderton?
Can I ask a follow-up question through you, please, Mayor? If we were to defer tonight, does that impact on our opportunity to still participate in the expression of interest?
I would be, um, I think you, we have to make an expression of interest by November?
Fifteenth.
Uh, fifteenth of November. So um, yes, we don't have time to wait until the next uh council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Councillor Kendall?
Um, yeah, just to say, I'm in support of this. I don't see it as a um blank check necessarily. And obviously, there's lots of the details that need to be sorted out, but it's a very strong need. Just, yeah, wish it could happen sooner really, so in support of this motion tonight.
Thank you, Councillor Kendall. Alderman Yaxley?
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Uh, and likewise, I'm in support of the expression of interest. I think it's important that we, if we're able to contribute um and partner as a facility, however that looks. but it's certainly in terms of approaching the Tasmanian Community Fund, saying we're, we're willing to, to discuss and look for something, I'm more than happy to, to engage.
Thank you Alderman Yaxley. I too, I'm in support of this motion. Uh, as the deputy mayor said, you know, there is a gap at the moment and we hear calls from our community often to do something to support, um, young people in need in our community and we as a council have tried to address the antisocial behaviour in our community through, um, both security presence and calling for increased police presence and through youth mentoring, support activities through the part, um, partners that we, um, partner with, the organisations that we partner with to provide mentoring and support to young people, uh, in need. And certainly that is having an impact, but we also know that it comes at a cost to the rate payer to do that. Uh, and is that fair? Is that council's responsibility, is that the rate payer's responsibility? Someone has to, uh, do it when there is a gap, someone has to respond and councils often are, is the government of the gaps, um, who does respond when there's call from the community to take action on issues. If we can get funding, given an amount of funding, we can do even more in this space. We are best placed in terms of a level of government to work at the grassroots level in the community and to bring organisations together as a backbone, uh, or as a backbone organisation in a collective impact type project. And I think that's what we have the opportunity to do through applying for this funding without it being a burden on the rate payer, significant burden on the rate payer. So I think, um, as my fellow elected members have said, taking up, uh, funding opportunities and particularly where we have the time here to work, um, with partners and with the Tasmanian Community Fund on what it looks like to get good outcomes. These sorts of programmes are really difficult to measure the outcomes of and certainly we're finding that already with some of the initiatives we're undertaking in the youth mentoring space. It takes time to effect change in these areas and governments have to be really brave because often you won't see the results, the fruits of the labour within an election cycle, which is why often governments don't take action, um, at that, uh, early intervention level on programmes that are going to address the root cause disadvantage, which is often poverty and trauma. Um, so, so, you know, we have an opportunity here and I'm really pleased that we are seeking to take that up. Any further discussion? I'll go to Alderman King to close debate.
Thank you, Mayor, I think we've covered it beautifully, let's move on.
Thank you, I'll put the motion to the vote, please raise your hand if you are for, that's carried unanimously. And just for the minute taker, Jenny, Director Richardson did leave the meeting at the commencement of the announcement of that item. Um, so if someone could retrieve Director Richardson, please. Oh, she comes, so Director Richardson returned to the meeting at four twenty-three PM. Item eleven, business improvement quarterly report update. We have a recommendation council receive and know the report on project Hudson Childcare Connections, Moona Arts Centre Business Plan and Progress on the Community Development Action Plan, moved Alderman Slade.
I just want to move something a little different, Mayor.
Yep.
Just have the, just as consistent, all the way through to plan and then, and the community development action plan. I, 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 I went through this and I, I don't know why I forgot the word progress there when the, when the whole report's talking about a report. And the other ones are actually talking about progress as well, while the word and progress was there. Didn't, to me, it just wasn't necessary, so I'm saying as it is and, and, and at the end just simply say, and the community development action plan.
Yep, so remove the words and progress on, oh, sorry, remove the words progress on.
Thank you, that's right.
And do I have someone to second that as the motion, Alderman King? Thank you, so it is as it reads on the screen, receive and note the report on project Hudson Childcare Connections, Samuna Arts Centre Business Plan and the Community Development Action Plan. Moved Alderman Slade, seconded Alderman King. Alderman Slade.
I'd like to report, Mayor, gives us the update on some items here that are pretty big, pretty, uh, big biggies and just what we're doing, which is really good. I just started off just in relation to project Hudson. Uh, it looks like we're on track for the rates and all that sort of thing for two thousand twenty-four will be done by the new system, is that right?
General Manager. That's, that's correct, Alderman Slade, we're having free implementation in April twenty twenty-four.
We had a discussion, thanks very much, that, we had a discussion, um, I feel it was about identifying issues on roadways and other issues like that, so we were told to hold back on, on an app and whatever. So is it my reading that that would come in after November two thousand twenty-four? That sort of scenario, is, am I reading that for external, um, provisions like that? Roadway issues, any other issues for reporting?
General Manager.
Um, yeah, uh, through you, Mayor, thanks for the question. Um, effectively the phase two is when those community accessible, um, services are likely to be available from. So phase three is the asset side of the project, which is November. But effectively the first phase lines up the systems and technology to be able to deliver some of those customer services externally, if you like. And really it's phase two, so then August twenty twenty-four date where we actually have the mechanism to deliver through the technology to deliver, um, those external systems. So it'll be some time following reaching that milestone, we will actually be able to roll out those systems, um, to the community if you like to access, um, access to, um, the portals as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, let's just go through, I think I only had one, one over here that I marked, um. Can just, somebody just tell me, the sparking conversations, uniting actions, I think it's a really good, what's the end, the ending of that? Can somebody just tell you when that ends and what we expect him to do once it ends? Let's start here.
Uh, our emergency management coordinator, David Robinson.
Through you, Mayor, thank you for the question. Um, the project is federally funded.
Yep.
We're around halfway through the project at the moment, um, involves four quite a high article councils. The outcome, um, is threefold. Uh, one is we are hoping in each of the 12 communities, we are carrying the project out, that there will be improved bushfire awareness for those communities that are involved. Uh, the second component is that it is, um, hoped that the, uh, lesson learned from the overall project will be rolled out across the state through other LGAs. And the third component is, um, any failures identified in the project. And I thought there's been, um, uh, opportunities for improvement that we've identified already, they'll be captured and sent back to the federal government for future funding rounds.
Right, any shortfalls, Mayor, that come up straight away that affect a municipality, like it might be Glenorkie or Kingborough or whatever, how are they dealt with? Are they, yeah, how, how they dealt with?
Through you, Mayor, there are three neighbourhoods in each of the four LGOs, so they're quite tight, um, neighbourhoods. Uh, what the project have currently doing are infiltrating those 12 neighbourhoods and looking to see where engagement has been really good, like in Bullet Hill, um,
Yeah.
south of Hobart, and where we might be experiencing challenge, um, in talking with communities like we are with West Moona at the moment. So the take up in West Moona, uh, with the project has been very low. So the project is currently reassessing how they might improve that.
Okay, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you Alderman Slade, any further discussion? Alderman Yaxley.
Uh, thank you, Mayor through you, I just, yeah, wanted to make note of the, obviously project Hudson, um, has been made on budget and continues to stay focused. Um, it's all about improving customer service, customer experience, productivity and obviously that employee feel as well. Uh, Moona Arts Centre, again, um, first steps to improve the public profile, the profile, um, and the exposure. So I'm looking just forward to seeing that continue. Uh, the childcare connections, maintaining a positive balance between chair, uh, children and carers. Um, and I love reading about the, um, the quality improvements, um, and learn unto all the staff in their continual learning, um, providing for the children, the families, uh, to the very best of their ability, it's great to see. And the community development plan, obviously a range of activities, um, that impact, uh, towards the fulfillment of our annual plan. So I'm more than happy to recommend to receive your noting.
Thank you Alderman Aldison.
Yes, I, um, reflect Alderman Yaxley's comments. I do have some questions here regarding what I think may potentially be some, some even further good news in this, uh, report. Looking at the childcare figures for Baradale and both Benjafield, uh, we have a budget, um, for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, where it appears that our, um, revenue is going to be slightly less than our expenditure, so one point four two five versus one point four eight seven. But the way I read the actual figures to date, and if somebody could maybe answer this question, and we seem to be travelling in the opposite direction, we seem to have really good healthy expenditure way above, sorry, really good healthy revenue, way above, um, expenditure. Is that look, looking likely to continue to the end of the, the annual budget and we, we may end up returning a surplus or some positive, um, figures here?
Thank you Alderman Aldison, our director, Director Richardson, are you able to answer that one?
Thank you through you, Mayor. Um, those figures are just an update to the quarter end. Um, that we will be doing a reforecast of the budget at the, um, halfway mark. So at December, in January, we'll be doing a full reforecast, so the annual budget hasn't been reforecast
Right.
at this point in time. Um, but yes, we are expecting that those numbers will hold, we have some very strong waiting lists. Still, we're not expecting a decline in the revenue that we're currently seeing.
Right, so you'd say we're tracking in a positive way at the moment and we, and we're actually to date more in surplus than rather than being in small debt, can be a fair assumption?
That is correct.
That, that's wonderful news, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Alderman Aldison, any further discussion? Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, yes, Mayor, I'd like to know, this is regarding the childcare connections. And I do understand the, um, limitations on the sector because it's very hard to get the staff, it's a national problem. Um, so we're saying there that utilisation should remain strong with the services, accepting enrolments of children at a level that ensures compliance with staffing requirements. So there are currently thirty-nine educators. Do we use other staff, like, is there an educator in, I don't know, something, some other level? And what level of educators do you need, like, sorry, I'll rephrase that. Are we at capacity and what is the capacity we, how many staff do we need to be at full capacity? So in other words, in both centres, what percentage of occupancy have we got? Given that we're limited by attracting staff that we need?
Thank you through you, Mayor, I can't give you those exact figures, Deputy Mayor. However, there are different levels of educators that are used through the centres. Um, and there's a sweet spot that enables us to, um, have, uh, the, the right number of educators per head, per child. If we go over that, we need to employ additional people, then it's an additional cost. So we try and ensure that we maintain that relativity. We're looking at the extension currently, um, to enable more children in various spaces, which will help with those relativities as well. Um, we're finding that some of the staff that we're employing have issues with the places with the amount of hours that they can actually work. So trying to ensure that, um, we, we enable sufficient hours for all of our educators is our key priority at the moment and finding enough staff to, to, to fill those vacancies at the time just continues to be an issue. So we try not to overestimate and overprovide and, and provide it, you know, in more places that we can actually start.
Yeah, uh, I totally understand and, um, accept that that's a very, you know, time consuming and difficult balancing, right, all the time. Um, perhaps I could ask then that at one of our next workshops, we have a report back on utilisation. Like, you know what I'm trying to get at? It's all very well to be running two childcare centres, but if we can't run them at a hundred percent capacity, um, which we never will be able to, but, you know, what is the capacity we could run at reasonably? And how does that look going forward into the future?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Any further discussion? No, I'll go back to move Alderman Slade to close debate.
Nothing further, Mayor.
I'll put the motion, please raise your hand if you are for, it's carried unanimously. Moving on to item twelve, engagement with state government on the AFL High Performance Centre proposals. Alderman Yaxley and I will leave the room and I'll hand over to Deputy Mayor to share this part of the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we have before us today a recommendation that notes, A, the state government's call for bids from councils in the Greater Hobart area for development of an AFL high performance centre. B, that the council has worked closely with state government officials to explore the opportunity for a centre in Glenorkie. C, that the state government's preferred option for Glenorkie has preliminary, preliminary ranking as a lower priority option. Would involve the Eddie Street Reserve, KG five AFL Oval Split Site and would require a twenty-seven year lease or donation of the land and relocation of the four community sporting clubs. D, that there are not enough sites in the city to relocate all of the community sporting clubs that would need to relocate and that new sporting facilities would need to be built for them at significant cost. Two, resolve not to submit a bid to the state government for the AFL High Performance Centre for the above reasons. Any discussion? Oh, Alderman Slade.
Uh, thanks, Deputy Mayor.
Oh, sorry, I meant to put the motion.
Can you put the motion?
Might put the motion?
Yeah.
Thank you, seconded, thank you Alderman King. I proceed.
Uh, thanks Deputy Mayor. Um, this is a really, really good report and I, um, really want to say thank you all, commend the general manager and the financial staff and other aspects of the organisations involved to put this together. Uh, sometimes it's really, um, uh, easy to say yes to something. And I think when this momentum went out about, you know, where this high performance centre, we all got excited. Everybody's excited, I think everybody liked to have something in their own city. But when you actually narrow it down, and that's what this report's done through the general manager's staff, it clearly shows the headaches in relation to moving particular organisations on. And worse than that, they're actually organisations that had a really long time in the city and made a major contribution in relation to sport and where they would be housed and whatever. So it's nightmare after nightmare after nightmare. Uh, it's been thoroughly looked at, I think it's really good for that point of view. There's no reason, we seem to have a mentality that, uh, uh, we can only do it in our city where I'm pleased that other cities are actually looking, uh, at themselves as well. And I just want to, I just think number two sums it up, that, uh, as a result of all those measures, uh, and in particular taken on board, that there's no suitability, in particular based on the movement and then the cost factor of moving those social clubs, uh, that, uh, we don't make a, a bid for the state government and for the, for the above reasons. And it's really the, the balls, the core of another council, Mayor, so it's on that basis that I re, make the recommendation.
Thank you Alderman King.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. And I concur with Alderman Slade's comments and just to add to that, that we are open for business, but for good business. And the way that this reads and the presentations we've had, it wouldn't be good business just to take this on and we're not going to be pushed into something for the sake of it. Uh, we would love to have that business if it fitted, but it doesn't fit. Not under the current standards and, and the setup that they want. Um, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you, thank you Alderman King.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, look, I've always been a big advocate of this, um, high performance centre being in the city, but after going through, um, the workshop process and hearing from staff, it's quite clear that we've come to this arrangement today and Alderman King and Slade have quite clearly outlined, um, the consequences really of what would happen if we did go down this venture. And it's not in the report, you'd have to say the relocation of Wellington Creek Club, the Glenorkie Stags, Glenorkie Knights Junior Football Club, for Meaty Street. Um, the Glenorkie Creek Club would have to move from KG five, there would be restrictions on the football club being there. Would have to redevelop numerous number of ivors, um, to a fact that we would be sure about thirteen facilities for those community groups. So logistically, um, it's not going to work unfortunately, um, although we have, we will keep an open mind as a council moving forward with any future proposals, if the AFL does want to change their position in regards to the requirements for the site, but, um, I think we can all sit quite comfortably going, we've done our diligence as a council and it's not something we should progress with in the current state.
Thank you, any further debate, councillor King?
Uh, in the ideal world, it'd be great to have a high performance centre in Glenorkie. But looking at what's happening, uh, with the stadium, whether we're going to have one at Macquarie Point or we're going to have one at the Regatta Ground, the state government, you know, wouldn't have a clue. The AFL wouldn't have a clue what's going on. We've got four great sporting groups that are going to be shafted if we go along with this. And the thought of a twenty-seven year lease. this, and the thought of a twenty-seven-year lease, you know, we'll all be dead and buried just about.
Just about.
Well, with few exceptions, but but uh no, it it you need to send a strong message to the state government that it's a dog's breakfast, it really is, no one seems to know what's going on, and uh, you know, it'd be ridiculous for a council like ours to put their hand up and say we want it here, it involves too much hardship and money.
Thank you, any further questions? Alderman Cockshut?
I just think it's quite clear that um obviously the current city council have started their consultation.
This is a question, because you already had a contribution.
Um, no, no question, that's fine.
Righto, thank you, Alderman Dunspie.
Thank you, I'd like to thank the general manager for following through, suggesting to find out what the parameters were, that we could have invested a lot of time and energy of staff to do something that could then be easily rejected, but we've certainly got the parameters of where we think their thinking is, and we haven't had to waste all of that energies on it. We can see the implications, should it have been a a proposal on on our very grassroots clubs that are there, uh so I'm pleased that we've got to this point and we have an understanding of where they're likely to be earlier rather than later, and we haven't had to invest a lot of time and energy and staff time into it, so I'm very happy with this report.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman Dunspie.
Yes, I too agree with the proposal before us and the decision we're going to make very, very shortly, because I too, while it would be wonderful to have an AFL high-performance centre here, and I look at the dollars and the money it would bring into our community, I also look at the downside and the loss of clubs that are entrenched into this community, and we've lost so much here in Glenorkie over the last few years, the sacrifice just isn't worth it in pursuing this AFL high-performance centre at the expense of all our local grassroots facilities and clubs.
Hmm. Thank you. Councillor Kendall?
It's gonna sound like a broken record, but I feel the the same way, it's a beautiful facility and there's definitely excitement around the room initially, I think. Um yeah, the important thing for me was that it was open to the public, that people could wander through and have access, and that it was affordable, but it looked more like it was for professional athletes only, um and yeah, the important, the other important thing to me was that it would really foster those local local sport and interest in local groups, and it's gonna do the opposite of that in our city, so displacing those clubs, so very happy to support this motion, and again, thanking the general manager for his work on it.
Thank you, any further discussion, any questions?
No, but we'll try some up then, my part of it. Um I was very interested when this first came across our desks, shall I? It was a big deal of excitement amongst some of our Alderman, and this could be a game-changer for the city. Um not being um a sporty person myself, I was more interested in the economic outcomes that were possible, but uh it was very interesting that the state government normally asks all councils to be collaborative and to share and play nicely, and all of a sudden it was wanting us to have this competitive tension, which immediately sent, shut us down my back as to what does that cost? You know, because there's always a quid pro quo, and the state government wouldn't be doing this as necessarily a favour, they would be looking at a partnership that would involve quite a good deal of money from the council that would end up partnering, and there are legacy issues such as the twenty-seven-year lease. So um I agree, I think our officers have done their usual due diligence superbly, they've given us all the facts and figures and and details that we need to come to this level of agreement, that it is not possible in our city, we just do not have the space for all the facilities, nor are we able to just um create them, and also that we would willingly toss out some very good grassroots clubs, so we just can't do it. So I'm fully behind on resolving not to submit a bid in this particular instance, but I would like to assure our constituency that we have considered it um very thoroughly, and that it's not something that we would turn our back on lightly if we didn't truly believe it wasn't in our economic and community spirit interest. So Alderman Slate, would you like some up?
No, nothing else, that, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, so I'm going to put it to the vote, all those in favour, put your hands, so it's unanimous. We'll now call back Mayor, thank you, and um councillor, no, it's not councillor, Alderman Yaxley.
Well done, Deputy, you're almost like you've done this before.
Once or twice, yes.
Very well, high, I believe you.
Much easier.
Thank you, item thirteen, financial management strategy, have a recommendation that council adopt the financial management strategy twenty-twenty-three to twenty-thirty-two, and the form set out in attachment one, do I have a mover? Top of ones, Alderman Dunspie, thank you, someone to second, councillor Kendall, Alderman Dunspie.
Thank you, I believe the information before us is very self-explanatory, and the requirements for that is just set out there in the attachments, and have you opened up for discussion?
Thank you, Alderman Dunspie, any further discussion?
Use the law of property, go on.
Right, happy for me to put the vote, the motion to the vote, I'll put the motion to the vote, please raise your hand if you're for, it's carried unanimously. Item fourteen, new and updated council policies, we have a recommendation that council adopt the gifts and benefits policy, adopt the disposal of council land policy, adopt the helicopter and other aircraft operations of council property policy, adopt the privacy policy, and adopt the rates and charges policy. Move to Alderman Cockshut, someone to second, Alderman King, Alderman Cockshut.
Thank you, ma'am, all pretty straightforward changes, no real commentary for me, I'm having all the proposed changes and amendments.
Thank you, Alderman Cockshut, any further discussion? Oh, hang on, um acting director, wanna raise a point?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am, I've just had a look through the policy regarding Eddie's comment, he's actually right, there are two spots in the disposal policy, if you would say, that would be better as the word dispose, just for clarity, so if you were interested, you could add the recommendation to change the word sale to dispose in section three point one and four point three.
Yep, so is that under transparency, public interest? And what else, three?
Yes, tra- transparency and the...
Three point one and...
Yeah, three point one transparency, that's right, and four point three, the valuation. Uh the word sales changed to dispose would actually be clear.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to prepare to lay, Mr. Stern, move for five and take that um little clause.
Yep. And you would like uh to move that amendment, or as the mover, Alderman Cockshut, would you be happy with that?
Yeah, that's fine, yep.
So minute taker, are we able to please make item two, adopt the disposal of council land policy, as set out in attachment four, and then add on to that with?
We're going to, with uh references to s- um
Disposal.
Sale, change to disposal.
Just dispose.
Dispose, yeah, well.
References.
Dispose, disposal slash disposal. With references to sale slash sell?
Change to disposal.
To be amended? To read? Dispose slash disposal? Um in three point one? And four point three? Come on. Can you tell me where it says it in four point three, please?
Uh just the first line, council might have valuation, council may have been recommended for sale.
Yep.
For disposal.
Yep, yep, so in three point one, it's under transparency and public interest, and then under valuation in that first line. So three spots, yep. Okay, so are you happy with that, seconder? Who was Alderman King? He happy with that?
Yes.
Yep, okay, thank you, thank you for that, acting director. Any further discussion of the item? Councillor Kendall?
I've got many, so I'm trying to um hone them down to the
That's okay.
Important ones, there's a lot.
Take your time.
Um so in the policy, I'm not sure which one this is, but why has the reference to council's open space policy been removed from the new land disposals policy?
Thank you, uh acting director?
Uh yeah, that strategy is, it's about ten years old, so it's just too out of time, I think, to reference as a core document um in here to to consider it for rationale, so obviously we've had a whole lot of new strategy since then, um the new sport rec strategy, uh for instance, so I think we'll just reference uh council strategies in general rather than pointing in on that specific one, because it's a little expensive to say, um last by strategy, sport rec strategy since last time.
Thank you, any further?
Um yeah, so do do, um valuations being private, obviously I understand that that's a, there's a commercial advantage in not publicising what valuations were for land, what's the risk here in terms of privacy? Around land valuation, is there a risk to that we get a too low price or?
Through you, ma'am, the risk is that if someone knows what the price is, they'll they'll pay that, um we won't allow, perhaps I should throw to the, to the, to another better quantified person in the room about this, but um it relies on the, it relies on the market to, so council is relying on the market to determine that price, you know, the majority of our disposals would be by sale on the open market, and uh you know, the intention is that we we market test, and you know, one of our principles in the policy is to get best uh best value for the community from those disposals, so um we do that by testing the open market in in most instances, and um and that's why it's i- important not to to basically name up the price, but we use, we do use the price, you know, sorry, the the valuation as a reference point in uh in any negotiations, and also um uh you know, it is then something that we then um formally report back to council uh under the proceeds of sale of council land policy.
Yep. Um wait, there's more. Um so I am interested in the legislation around drones, this is going to the helicopter and other aircraft operations policy. Does council, does council have an obligation to regulate the use of drones in our airspace?
I don't think it's that, I think it's the uh civil aviation, it's not, we control where the, like, land, but not...
Thank you, general manager, or um acting director?
I'm not at all.
This policy is referring referencing council land, so obviously on council land, we have the ability just to say no, uh we're not quite saying no, we're saying no unless you can demonstrate you've got appropriate insurances, you follow the council's rules and the like, so that we're, I guess, the legal idea, if you don't get some, you're not, you're not quite, um in regards flying in other areas that aren't council land, then no, I don't believe council can say that, that would be a CASA, civil aviation.
Just to clarify, ma'am, was wasn't this reference to emergency service and things like that, someone got to land in the area that, you know, would normally have a helicopter land, but it needs to land, drop water, whatever it might have to do, that's more of what it's about rather than an open slather for?
Anyone?
Yeah, anyone to just, you know, if I got a helicopter next week to fly here and park in the car park, but...
Is that right?
Through you, ma'am, it's, yeah, it's a requirement of our insurers in in terms of council land. And I I don't know, ma'am, I don't know much about drones, but I have had dealings with um helicopter landing permit applications in the past, there's a very clear line of um separation between what happens on the ground and then what happens, once, once the pilot um is operating it, it then becomes very much a CASA um jurisdiction rather than a council jurisdiction.
Yeah, this is the first time I thought about the possibility of drones causing damage to property in our area, and even privacy implications of drones flying around it, I'm sure people aren't asking you for permission when they're flying drones, but we're saying that's our policy. Um yeah, so that was a question that popped up about our obligation for monitoring it. Um many other question was around the Wellington Park Management Trust, I know they um they have permits for drone operators in their area, just checking that this isn't gonna interfere with their policies around that.
Uh yep, Tracy, um our manager, people and governor?
Sorry, through you, ma'am, um yes, they do, they use the drones for surveillance and management of Wellington Trust. Um each year when we renew our insurances, we actually contact those drone operators, and we give all their insurance cover and council um details, and that's all put through and it's our insurance, so we ensure compliance with the policies through there.
Okay. Thank you. Uh do you have any further questions?
There's a few more, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
For sure. Um in the rates and charges policy, why has the capacity for differential rates been removed from point seven?
General manager, you aware of that one? Or our acting manager for finance? Wait, can you just tell us which page that's on? Oh, yeah, we've got it written down, that's okay.
Through you, ma'am, um differential ratings now at clause six of the new policy.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yes, yep.
I'll move this in the track changes.
Yeah, and easy in the track changes. So clause six, council may, council by absolute majority may declare that the general rate varies within the municipal area or within different parts of the municipal area according to any or all combination of all of the following factors, predominant, the use or predominant use of the land, the non-use of the land, the locality of the land, any planning zone or any other prescribed factor.
Okay, so yeah, I just saw that word dropped out of there, and I didn't know if that meant that we don't have the capacity for it anymore, or if it's just been rephrased in.
It's been rephrased to be in accordance with the legislation.
Yep, okay, okay, thank you, good question, thank you.
Um yeah, sorry, it's getting pretty granular, but in the rates and charges, there's I there's a reference to he or she in under twenty-one for points uh D and E, and I think it's probably better, best practice to use non-binary language in council policy, so I'd suggest a rate payer.
Uh so D and E, he or she is not liable for the payment, um on page five of the policy.
Yeah.
Yep.
Through you, ma'am, I believe that's the wording from the...
Yeah, yeah, that's what I wondered, if it's maybe the wording in the legislation, in which case we ought to stick to that.
Have to go up higher.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, so thank you, note that comment, and I'm su- sure that that would be the um intent wherever we can. Thank you, any others? No, that's me, thank you, Alderman Slate.
I might just question, uh um ma'am, just take, follows on from councillor Kendall, because I've already seen him in operation, we just need some signings, clear signage in our parks about these drones, because I'm more, I don't care they get smashed, but I'm more in, I'm more concerned about any cars and people and young kids, so uh we had great signage in our organisations, just, I just think with the increase now, can we just take that on board? Um I noticed that they're flying them quite a bit now down near the Water's Edge, um you know, Montrose Bay, and we just, you know, they come down, they can do quite a bit of damage, so, so it's just signage, that's what I'm coming from there, thank you.
Thank you, um acting director, is that side we've considered? Yeah, signage?
Uh no, I guess we haven't considered that at this current point.
Hmm, okay, thank you, thank you, Alderman Slate, any further discussion? So I'll go back to mover, Alderman Cockshut, to close debate.
Oh, good, thank you.
Thank you, I'll put the motion to the vote, please raise your hand if you're for, it's carried unanimously. Moving on to item fifteen, capital works status report, have a recommendation that council receive a note of capital work status report thirty for September with foreshadowed in budget variation, and note that confirmed budget changes will be returned to the council with next quarterly report, formal endorsement of budget variations to be sought at that time. Someone to move this as a motion? Alderman Yaxley, someone to second, councillor Kendall, Alderman Yaxley.
Thank you, Beth, through you, um yeah, good things are happening, you only have to look, and I'm loving the breakdown of activities that'll link back to our annual plan and the strategic goals, I think it's a, it's a, it's a great way of explaining and making sure that... I think it's a, it's a great way of explaining and making sure that we're staying on track with our annual plan. It's good to see planning applications have increased slightly, I voted for Q1. And there's also a reduction in days for processing discretionary applications. And that trend also for reducing the processing of the permitted applications.
Can I just pause you there? Sorry, because I think you've got to head to the next one.
Have on.
We're on item fifteen, Capital Works Status.
My apologies.
That's okay. I just didn't want to keep you going further. Hold that, hold that thought.
I was on a roll. Because I'm going to have to say that again.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you were.
I apologize. I was trying to find my role.
And we know who's going to move the next item.
I'm going to listen to you twice.
Just to clarify, can, just to clarify, if you have another look up there, what we are receiving, noting the Capital Works Status Report, are you still happy to move that? You are still happy to move that? And councillor Kendall, you're happy to move that? Okay. Would you like to talk to us or open the floor to debate?
But it is very good to see, obviously, our Capital Works programme. It's been a real focus of our council over the last few years and especially in our first term, which is coming up. So it's great to see that happening. And it's great to see also the explanation in terms of, you know, the status report of where things are at. So I'll take note of that. And if anyone is interested, certainly make those investigations into the agenda and you'll be able to find an update.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman Slade?
I just want to add, Mayor, that this is good news. And it's nice to see some good news, not just always bad news. But I've got to say that the, I've certainly in almost 30 years, I've never seen such great, healthy activity around play spaces in the city. It's, this is really good, whether they be completed, new, renovated, whatever. It creates great space for people to meet, creates space for people to participate, and exercise. And incorporates being an inclusive community. And honestly, Mayor, I'd really be down for people to advertise and show this because this really does create your own sort of patch in your own backyard. And I think it's something you're proud of. I'm proud of it. And I just want to emphasise some really good things in this report, good mechanisms that we can check through. I commend the way it's been put together. It's very easy to follow. And that's what it should be about. But just on this particular one here that I've highlighted, I think it's a good one to show later on, perhaps in a media style of watching your own backyard and why we have them. That's all I would say, ma'am.
Thank you. Thanks, Alderman Slade. Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to support it too. What I like about it is when I first came onto this council and there was a report on the status of our playgrounds, and it was extremely depressing and embarrassing that so many things were dilapidated, dangerous, needed condemning, and that they were just so out of date for what modern safe play spaces should be. So I think the council has embraced that programme and really got stuck into it, which is fantastic. And just for example, there's one, one point here labelled 101918, which says play space renewal, $204,138. And then it's talking about variation. Reallocate this amount to the Benjyfield playground so that it can be completed this natural year. Noting the renewal programme is concurrently delivering 10 other local play spaces with the $1.5 million bid grant support. So what I like is if we can't proceed in one direction because we can't get the material, there's no workers or some other, the weather's held something up, the staff are nimble enough to be able to quickly swap it around and move it on to another project so that we are constantly getting on with things. We're actually delivering a whole lot in this term of council and it's all good news. So I do like that flexibility that's been built into our workforce at the moment. And you can see that by reading this report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Quick?
This is a really comprehensive outline of Capital Works. And for the naysayers and the critics of the council, I mean, what more can you want? If you highlight it here, and I'd like to put on public record the wonderful work that the council workers have done for the flood mitigation in Berrodale, which is almost completed, despite some adverse weather conditions and 36mm the other night. But it's all working beautifully. And I personally thank the workers. And I'd like to put on the public record my appreciation for everybody involved in that process because we had, we had to suddenly expend more than a million dollars to save the flooding of, you know, quite a few houses in the Berrodale area. And it's been done seamlessly with beautiful work. You know, you get, it's just fantastic. So I'm glad to be part of the process.
Thank you. Alderman King?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to agree with what's been said before and again. There is some negativity around council at the moment. It feels to me like there's more happening than has ever happened on my time with council and the growth. And to me, the general manager and the other managers of staff, particularly the works, you know, everyone's having a real go and we're progressing. And it should be recognised, I mean, it should be really recognised that the state we're in. And I think Alderman Slade, in particular for his comments, his experience on that area and so.
Thank you, Alderman King. Any further discussion? Alderman Aldison?
I'd just like to value it. Not only does this report spread good news of infrastructure we're delivering and spending in the community like skate parks, et cetera, even little things like our solar panels, which are going to save money. I know we've only just spent 48 grand here tying down the solar panels, but the actual fact that we're investing in solar panels, we're investing money in our, in our works programme to value add and save money for council. Even relocating and downsizing your buildings and making more workspace in this building. Also, it's going to be a cost benefit to council and a saving. So that needs to be recognised as well.
Thank you. Alderman Cockshut?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just echo everyone's thoughts around the table. It's really exciting to see all the work happening and good things around the city. Obviously, 10 play spaces, which are listed in the report, most to be completed for this financial year. Obviously, Gibleen's Reserve is the kind of jewel with Benjyfield Park all underway. We've obviously seen Alderman Aldison just said in regards to the solar panels, good to see investment from council into renewable energy, which is great to see. We've had the skate park and a lot of other good things happening. So onwards and upwards. It's just getting out the message that we're doing a really good job and echo councillor Quick's comments in regards to all the council staff and the work they've done behind the scenes to make these things happen. So there we go.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I echo the comments from my fellow elected members around the table and appreciate the work of staff in getting on with these projects to deliver on the ground for our community. About two years ago, I remember budget discussions, the council at the time was emphatic that we must fund 100% our renewal budget, the renewal requirements in our long-term asset management plan, our long-term financial plan, management plan. You know, we said we can't anymore be in the red in funding renewal. We can't let our assets get any further behind. And that's what this council has been committed to as well. This council has really embraced that and remains committed to that so that we have quality infrastructure for our community. A number of things have been mentioned here. We've recently completed the skate park and mountain bike park upgrades. And they certainly would much love, already are much loved assets in our community. We did cop quite a bit of flak about BMX Park relocating that to Sorel. But again, I note that was a private club. You had to be a member to use the facility, had about 120 members. They are happier with the facility that they're going to be able to be provided at Sorel. It's going to be a national standard facility that we didn't have the land here to be able to provide in our city of Glenonki. But we have now a skate park and a mountain bike park that is open to everyone. You don't have to have a membership to use those facilities. And I think that's a wonderful thing. The stormwater upgrades have been greatly appreciated by the community. I know councillor Quick mentioned that. I know over last weekend when we had the big rain event, I received a text message and from one community member, an email from another, saying what a relief it was to wake up the next morning and find that they did not have flooding and how grateful they were for the work of council. So congratulations to our infrastructure and works team. And I've got their director here. So congratulations, well done to you, Patrick, and the team on those works. I know they've taken a bit of planning and time. And we've had to ask some community members to be patient through that time. But the response overall has been really quite rapid, particularly to the Berrodale flooding issues. So well done to the team and how much that is appreciated. The community really means a lot to the, to the community. Playgrounds are very exciting. You know, we've really got momentum going with all of our projects through the community. And yes, we know the pool is, you know, a huge issue for some people in our community. And we, you know, we're upset about that too. And we are working hard on finding a resolution to that. But we've got to celebrate these wins, you know. And I'm really grateful for the report that's before us, which does provide us with comprehensive updates each quarter that we can share to the community. And as Alderman Slade said, celebrate, make sure we're promoting to the community the work that we're doing with rate payers' money to improve our community facilities. So happy to support receiving a noting Capital Works Status Report and appreciate the heads up that budget changes will be returned to council for formal endorsement. I think it's, you know, we like to operate off from a good governance perspective, no surprises. And that's what this is about here. So really grateful for the report and keep up the good work. And thank you to my fellow elected members for supporting the investment in renewal as well. Any further contribution? I'll go back to the mover, who was Alderman Yaxley, to close debate.
Nothing more to make.
Put the motion to the vote. Please raise your hand if you're for. It's carried unanimously. Item sixteen, just note for the minutes that Alderman King left the meeting at 5:12. 5:12pm. Quarterly report, quarter one ending 30th of September 2023. Any mover for this? To Alderman Yaxley, have you? Here's one, you prepared earlier. Moved Alderman Yaxley, seconded Alderman Dunstey. Alderman Yaxley.
Well, I've said a lot already. My only, I'll have just a question, I just regarding the permits. Where it says no permit required had spiked considerably. If there was a reason behind that or is it just an odd month? Through you, chief.
You know, I'm not aware off the top of my head, sorry. It might just be the nature of the development. I know I'm on the new payment scan, a lot more of your stock standard residential developments in a residential zone makes it more compliant. So tend to get more of the under them scan because it's a bit of a simple process, but yeah, be a standard development.
Yep. I resolved.
Okay. Any further discussion? Alderman Dunstey?
Yes, thank you. I'm pleased to read the figures that were put together for us in regard to the penalties and the changes and how they've been enacted. And it has actually benefited people. To see this information here so soon, you know, I didn't really see that we would see as quickly as we have. But we can see that in the previous year, there were 2,745 penalties applied after seven days at 10%. And the average impact of that was $51.20 per rate account. This year, there were 1,406 penalties applied after 21 days at 5%, resulting in an average of $20.90 per account. So these comparative figures over the two years indicate approximately 1,339 rate payers avoided penalties because of the extended time. And the rate payers who did incur a penalty saved around $30 because of the reduced percentage. It doesn't sound like a lot of money, but to somebody who may be in that situation, that could be a very significant benefit to them. So I'm very grateful that we're able to put that in and appreciate the figures being here before us.
Thank you, Alderman Dunstey. Councillor Quick?
I'd like to endorse Alderman Dunstey's comments on the overdue rate procedure. Considering things are going to get tougher before they get any better, I'd like to think that we, you know, continue this for a little while until we start seeing a bit of shining light. But, you know, the 1,300 people that have benefited, I'm surely will thank us for, you know, the foresight that we've come up with something and are less sort of onerous on the rate payer and more understanding of how people are doing it. Really tough at the moment.
Thank you, councillor Quick. Any further discussion? Alderman Aldison?
Yes, I too, Mayor, would like to comment on the new overdue rate procedure for rates. But I would like to see us also at some stage as a council get together and review this even further and maybe step even better than the 5% penalty for people that are obviously going through extreme hardships in this moment in time. And it's only going to get worse as time goes on. So while I applaud and think it's a great move, I would like to see it tweaked further.
Thank you, Alderman Aldison. I know we do also have our hardship policy, which enables people to apply for further relief. Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, a note in the expenditure that employee costs reported another spend of $0.363 million, which is due to positions remaining vacant during the recruitment process, which is expected to continue for some time. Obviously, that puts a lot of pressure on other staff to plug gaps. Can I just have confirmation that we're not trying to contain those positions or full cost savings? Or we're genuinely in this situation because such a competitive mind view of stuff?
Through you, ma'am. The latter is the case, Deputy Mayor. So yes, there has been greater than normal staff turnover. It's really a feature of the current job market, very competitive. It's hard to hold on to people. But as we are, we are working very actively to make sure that we get recruitment processes initiated as quickly as possible when there's a vacancy. And we've certainly picked up some good people in the last week or so of just finalising contracts for them. So it is, it is, it is a higher than normal flow. But we are, we are certainly not looking to make vacancy savings. We're basically working to, to recruit into those positions as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I thank you, General Manager. In the past, we have had some vacancy control for full cost savings. But I do know the current work climate is particularly difficult. However, getting a position in a council is usually considered one of esteem and also a good career, lots of options for growth. So, yeah, it's a pity that we're in this situation. So can I just ask, is there any particular, like, is it hygienists or planners? Are they, what are the most difficult to fill?
Well, I mean, the normal, I guess, local government hard-to-fill positions are really in engineering, planning, environmental health. They're probably the key ones. But really, there's no particular area where we're copying a huge amount of attrition. We've certainly, the other factor, I guess, is with the Bridgewater Bridge project. It's really difficult to retain, but they're offering pretty competitive wages in that project. And so that is dragging a few people away. But we've, we've certainly, we've had a number of out to workforce recruitments ongoing at the moment. So we are, as I say, just, as and when these occur, we are moving to actively to fill the vacancy rather than trying to make a saving.
Yeah, I guess it's, on one hand, it's good news in that there's lots of, lots of people employed. But on the other hand, it does put pressure on the other people trying to fill the gaps. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, any further discussion?
I appreciate the quarterly report, quarterly annual plan progress report and planning programme report updates for the first quarter of the year. There's been a lot going on in the quarter. It's been a busy time for council. And I know this is a comprehensive report that does take a lot of effort to put together by our staff. And it's a really good record of what we've achieved over the quarter. So I just want to note that it is appreciated, particularly the way the reporting is done on the annual plan measures. It's really informative. And I think, you know, it just keeps getting better. So I just wanted to put that on the record, that that is appreciated. Certainly makes us, for us, it makes doing our job easier when we can have clear oversight of the strategic measures and actions that we've endorsed as a council. So I'm happy to receive and note it. And again, we just need to keep promoting the good work that we are doing for the community.
No further discussion. We'll go back to mover Alderman Yaxley to close debate?
Nothing more.
Put the motion to the vote. Please raise your hand if you're for.
Put the motion to the vote, please raise your hand if you are for. That's carried unanimously. Moving on to item seventeen, notice of motions, questions on notice or without notice. That question from Alderman Dunsky from the last meeting, which has been answered in the agenda. Are there any other questions without notice tonight in open council? Councillor Kendall.
I move a motion without notice. It's not usually the done thing, but it is procedurally allowed. General Manager, to move a motion without notice? Just let me confirm.
Yeah, you can, yeah, you can. Yep, you can.
Right, so I would like to move a motion that council accept climate mapping consultants Geo Neon to attend a council workshop in the lead up to summer. So I believe the offer's there and they have some interesting findings around Glanorky L G A's susceptibility to heat waves.
Thank you. I'm not sure we need a motion to that because it is actually scheduled in the workshop calendar already. David, can you just confirm that for me, please? I'm sure we. Is that Roxanne? Roxanne, is it? Roxanne from Geo Neon? Just let me check. I'm sure it's already scheduled. Councillor Kendall.
It's just an invitation.
That worked well.
Yeah, so just if you could just phrase it as a question.
Yeah, sure.
Can council have climate mapping consultants? That might be easier. So as a question, can council invite climate mapping consultants Geo Neon to present at a council workshop? Excellent. And the answer is yes, scheduled. Brilliant. Yes, scheduled. It is, I've definitely seen it in the workshop calendar. So it is, it is scheduled. Say it again. Thirteen to November.
Thirteen to November four P M.
Thirteen to November four P M. Excellent.
Oh, one P E.
Stop it. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, my notice of motion would be that the Glanorky City Council officers do a report on how to remove single use plastics from our community in very much in line with the Hobart City Councils. So at the moment, it takes away from the city in a melty box. And if you get it from Glanorky, it's usually in a plastic box, which is no good for the environment. So Hobart City Council brought it in in a phased fashion so that small business could cope with any cost processes. And I would like to see Glanorky follow suit. I was quite surprised with that part behind.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And before we go any further, I moved a similar motion back in two thousand and.
About time I got on with it then.
Nineteen. And we did receive a report back on options for and pros and cons and things.
Now, four years later, I think we need to review it.
So.
But that's the thing, it's reviewed than have a new report.
Well, there's a report on, so your motion is G C C officers do or provide a, provide.
If I can reference that one.
On how to remove single use plastics from the city. That is your motion. Do I have someone to second that motion? Seconded, Councillor Kendall. Would you like to speak further to the motion, Deputy Mayor?
Oh, I think it's just that, you know, if it was raised in two thousand and nineteen and it's been successfully implemented in our sister city next door, I just can't see why we can't do it here. You know, we, we talk about the environment a lot and we would like to have better green credentials than we've got. Although we do have our first green councillor, which is good. I, I just think it's time to get on with it and all councils in the state should be looking at it. It isn't really a matter of cost anymore. It's about cost benefits. So all, there is so much product available for alternative delivery of food. And, you know, we get away from straws and things like that. So I'd just like to see us doing best practice.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any further discussion of the motion? Further discussion? I want to just ask a question of the acting director. I know we've received, I received an email from a community member asking a similar thing recently. And there is some work being done at the state level and nationally on some regulation around this issue. And some understanding was that what we were hoping was to work in with a state consistent approach. Because I know passing a bylaw can take quite a long time and that's what I believe we would have to do.
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor. The state government's committed to a phase out of single use plastics in twenty twenty five. So we've been working, I guess, with them and the regional body around a collaborative approach to phasing out across the state. As the mayor alluded to, having a consistent basis across the state certainly helps the work better. The states outline the need for better organics processing facilities to be able to cope with that. So they've invested significant money into new regional organic processing facilities, which are being rolled out as we speak. So the idea is that they are put out in place readiness for twenty twenty five phase out. There's obviously a lot of implications that go with a single use plastics phase out. So yeah, it's not a little single use plastics, it's what I call the problematic single use plastics. Takeaway containers and cupboards and the like. If those takeaway containers and the like just end up in the rubbish bin, which unfortunately is largely what's happening at the moment, that ends up at landfill, they're organic. And in an aerobic environment of a landfill, it breaks down into methane gases. And it's actually a really bad contributor to global warming greenhouse gases. So it's, it's something that needs to be looked at holistically. We need to have the facilities in place to, to process those and to deal with them and to collect them. And also community support to not contaminate. Home F O G O is generally reasonably good with contamination, but public F O G O facilities are generally terrible with contamination. Put a F O G O bin on the street, unfortunately, it very rarely ends up with uncontaminated materials, which means it always ends up at the landfill again. So there is a need for a collective approach across the state, including education, including the processing facilities and the phase out with the other, with the industries that use it as well. So I guess, yep, certainly can.
Given that that is two thousand and twenty five and Hobart City Council has properly had it in action from two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, somewhere like that. And we could follow their model and get started, is there any like major problem with that? I mean, it's already happening in one municipality.
Yeah, it is. And I think if it only happened in one municipality, the ability for the, for the process facilities to cope with it is probably, are probably okay. It's much all twenty nine councils are doing it, but we need that extra capacity. But as well as that, it's not just that, it's, as I said, it's also bringing the whole community on board with the requirements for it, which unfortunately doesn't work as well in a, in a piecemeal way. I think you speak to offices at Hobart Council, they've had mixed success with, with their F O G O in public areas in terms of contamination and a lot of that's still ending up in landfills.
But even if we deal with a product, a problem, we get fifty percent response rate or fifty percent success. And it's just the public area that we have to pay more attention to. We, we do have this consciousness going through schools. We also have it going through the Woolworths, the Coles. All of those people are going away from plastic bags or unfriendly plastic bags. So I would still like to see this council as a leader rather than a follower where possible.
Yes, I can tell you we're not making the decision to make us feel better and we're having the genuine outcome where.
That's what I want too. I don't want tokenistic stuff, but I'm saying Hobart is doing it.
Yes, but if a lot of it ends up in landfill, are we improving the situation? I guess it's a challenge.
So perhaps that can be written into a report so we can make an informed decision. Also, the process that it would take, because my understanding is the last time we tried to get a bylaw through, it took two years. Which would get us to twenty twenty five anyway. Any further discussion of the item, of the motion? So just to be clear, because it's not yet up on the screen, the motion is that council, G C C officers provide a report on how to remove single use plastics from the city.
As, as per Hobart City Council. So as we don't reinvent the wheel.
Any further discussion? I will go back to mover anything to close the debate. I'll put the motion to the vote, please raise your hand if you are for. That's carried unanimously. Any further questions without notice? Alderman Aldison.
I'd like to put a motion to council as well while we're at it, Mayor. The motion I would like to put to councillors, council officers, I think it's high time that we brought F O G O to the business community in Glanorky and not just the rate payers to further reduce our footprint in, in the community in regards to waste at the, at the Jackson Street landfill site. So I'd like to move a motion that we ask council officers to conduct a commissioner report into the possibility of implementing a F O G O service to the businesses in Glanorky.
So your motion is that council officers provide.
A report.
Report on introducing F O G O to commercial, commercial rate payers?
Yes, please.
Do I have someone to second that? Second, Deputy Mayor. Anything further to open debate? Alderman Aldison.
Well, pretty much, I just think it's high time we were innovative as a council and further reduced our, our waste footprint. We all know climate change is real and anything this council can do to reduce the level of waste that's going in the landfill, be it commercial waste, we capture private rate payers F O G O waste very well and we reutilise that and we recycle that very well back into the community. But we do have a very large commercial green waste footprint, which I'd like to see captured as well.
Thank you, Alderman Aldison. Further discussion?
Just a question here for me. Acting Director, why don't we do that now? Why don't we not go ahead with that in the first place?
Acting Director.
I'm actually sure off the top of my head. That's a good answer. That's a good answer. That's fine.
Thank you.
Just want to, yeah, ever report us something before we.
Yeah, we have. Yep, thank you. Alderman Yaxley.
Just a question, could these two recommendations be combined? I guess.
Yeah, I guess the, like, it is a fair bit of work that we're asking our staff to do that isn't factored into our annual plan. So I'm always conscious of that when we're moving motions at will without any prior warning.
Mayor, can I just pull you up on that? I, I definitely referenced copying the Hobart City Council's one and using those resources. Plus, you've got a report from two thousand and nineteen. So I don't think it's a significant ask of our officers to do something that's in the best interest of.
Absolutely. You're entitled to your view on that and so am I. So that, I'm just making the point that it's something that's not here now, currently in our annual plan. Whether they can be combined, well, we contributed to our annual plan and none of us raised these things at that time. So Acting Director, I'll seek your advice on whether the reports could be combined or you'd prefer them to be separate reports.
I would probably suggest a separate matter.
Yep, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman Slade.
Now, my only thing is that I hope I don't offend anybody. But this ability is, is a notice of motion to whatever. I've always done my notice of motions in writing and everybody around the table has seen me for a note while. And the reason is, is so management can see where I'm coming from, getting in contact with me and whatever. Very conscious about the timeframe and cost to commit to the staff and things like that. But more importantly, that they can, they can tell me whether or not there's not something already underway and that sort of thing. So I'm not putting off any, that's, we've got our right to raise anything. I'm just telling the people why I put a notion motion writing and so on.
Thank you, Alderman Slade. Any other discussion on the motion, which is council officers provide a report on introducing F O G O to commercial rate payers? Councillor Kendall.
Yeah, I'm excited to see all this climate support around the table. Very exciting.
It might just be a wave.
A raised eyebrow for Alderman Slade. Yeah, and there's, as we've, as we've identified, there's a lot of behavioural questions around all of these waste issues. And I know that it's always harder in a workplace to take care of waste responsibly. I think there's some great examples that we could pull from certain areas. I know Degrade Street in Melbourne has a fantastic sort of closed look commercial F O G O facility, which we could possibly bring in. But yeah, I'd love to bring this forward in next year's budget and setting out, not to say that we don't take action before then. But I think these are all actions that could come out of our climate mitigation plan that we've, that we've planned, but we haven't resourced yet. So I'm really excited to see all the energy around it, around the table, to put some dollars behind that when we see it hit the table.
Yeah, thank you. Alderman King.
Two things, would they be cleaning, you were talking about, or, sorry, that was just a little quick. But we haven't really budgeted for this, so it would be, I imagine, quite an expense. Not your motion, but the, the bringing in of the F O G O for, and like you said, maybe for the future budget, which is not that far away. It's something we certainly need to look at, but just make sure we don't put the cart before the horse.
Be brave sometime, thank you.
Be brave, yes. We've got to have the money to be brave with.
Acting Director, can I just ask what, how much of an impost, not compost, would it be to provide such a report? I, I'm fairly sure we have received information on this previously because it has been raised previously, perhaps on in a report as such. But when we did discuss our F O G O introduction, this was something that certainly was discussed around the table.
Yeah, I don't know that it's going to be terribly onerous. I don't know what I can think before, Councillor Steve, but the.
What's that, sorry?
We don't actually provide commercial waste services full stop. I mean, there are, there are a couple of exceptions, but it's, it's not just F O G O, they, they go to private contractors. Some of the private contractors offer a F O G O service, but council doesn't actually provide commercial waste collection. We provide.
Certainly for a residential house that's turned into a business, it's that sort of collection.
Couple of exceptions, yeah. Generally, it's, it's residence.
So would those couple of exceptions be part of our F O G O program or not?
Potentially, yes. I think it's like Steve said, where it might be a home business that's operating a shop and a, and a house at the same time. So there will be a few of those, but not very many.
So at.
If you're on the system, it'd be required for Alderman, unless they have any exemption.
So at the moment, council does not collect or manage the waste collection or levy commercial rate payers for waste collection, for recycling or general waste either. So it would perhaps be an anomaly to start introducing F O G O.
I, yeah, it would obviously involve a significant change in practice to provide commercial services as well.
Mayor, do you have a question? Did you have a question first?
No, I was just waving.
You were just waving your pen?
I'd like to, I think this one's a question without notice and hopefully you can answer it. What do we do about medical waste, you know, for people who've got disposable, how do I put it, sanitary items or blood contaminated products?
Yeah, it's a complicated matter. I think there are.
And needles?
Yeah, there are specific services to take contaminable, you know, to take medical waste and they go to special facilities. There's some exemptions though where like it might just be, what would you call, low level. Yeah, low level medical waste can simply be disposed of in your, in your general waste. I don't know the, off the top of my head, the exact breakdown, but I know it's come up before where we've noticed certain waste types show up at the landfill and check. Yeah, there's, there's certain types which can be, can be put in with your, with your general waste to certain levels. But dedicated facilities generally have to take their medical waste to a specific, through a specific collection.
So do we, so do we have one for needles for diabetes in a collection point in our region? I know there's one in the city.
People can collect syringe deposit containers from council here?
We supply those.
But where, where do we take them back to?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, Steve. Okay, that's a specific, a specific medical waste collection point.
In Glanorky? Right, because I don't know, I'm not an Alderman.
Yeah, we can take that on notice, I think. Deputy Mayor provides some information about that.
Yeah, currently we take it at the city.
Yeah, so back onto this motion, which is about F O G O. Alderman Aldison, did you have a question?
Yeah, just had a further question, if you don't mind. Sorry, you may, I can ask the director. So in regards to commercial operators that have their waste collected by a third party and obviously nothing to do with us at council, the waste gets collected by this third party. Do we have any control over their on dumping of green waste and F O G O waste into our landfill facilities? Do we, are. Do we, are we in a position to pose a penalty on, or an increased cost on them to deter them from depositing that green waste in landfill or not?
You mean organic waste?
Organic waste, yeah.
We've certainly, you might recall, we increased the rates for commercial waste at the landfill this current financial year reasonably significantly to help encourage that better separation of waste. Like I think as you're alluding to, when it's a business decision, often businesses will just go, this is quicker and easier. So we just lump it all in there. So part of that rationale was to increase the commercial waste disposal rates whilst keeping our residential rates low to encourage that better behaviour. So it actually makes sense for businesses to go, actually, I'm going to segregate because I can dispose of my green waste at this rate, FOGO at this rate, but my general mixed waste is at a much higher rate. So I guess we have...
So does an increasing cost have any impact on reducing it?
Um, hard to, hard to be sure. At this point in time, we'll have a year's data at the, at the end of the year to see whether commercial waste volumes have, have reduced or not. Yeah, not sure off the top of my head, but yeah, I guess research generally does show that it's price pressures that make the biggest difference.
Yeah, so it's one thing whether further price pressures might, might be the way to go.
Perhaps. And that's obviously part of the levy introduction as well. Same rationale. It's levy on, on general waste to encourage that, with that it's separated, your recyclables and your reusals.
Thank you.
And Acting Director, most commercial waste services have contracts with the waste transfer station. So they make solutions at Lutana rather than dumping to our landfill. Is that right?
Uh, yeah, a mixture, yes.
Any further discussion on the motion that council officers provide a report on introducing FOGO to commercial rate payers? I speak to it whilst I fully support the intent. And I remember having this conversation at the time we introduced FOGO, particularly in relation to food businesses and restaurants, having the capacity to actually influence behavioural change and save that waste going to landfill. At the time we introduced FOGO, I think the point the acting director has made is that at the moment we don't provide commercial waste services to commercial rate payers. Means this is something that would need quite significant consideration. Our, we've, we've just moved a motion that our waste officers prepare a report on single-use plastics, which is something that they will need to bring back to us this financial year. I'm happy to continue discussions around this, but I, I think it needs further discussion before we ask council officers to invest in providing a report back to council. So I won't be supporting the motion at this time. Any further discussion? I'm going back to Alderman Alderton to close debate.
Okay, nothing further to add at this stage. Thanks, Mayor.
Put the motion to the vote. Please raise your hand if you're for. That is councillor Quik, councillor Kendall, Alderman Dunsky, Deputy Mayor Hickey, and Alderman Alderson. Against is Alderman Yaxley, Mayor Thomas, Alderman King, Alderman Slade and Alderman Cockshut. The motion is tied, which means, the vote is tied, sorry, which means the motion is lost. And we will move on. Any further questions without?
No, no, I was just going to move to go to close council.
Move to go to close council. Alderman King, seconded, Alderman Slade. Please raise your hand if you're for. That's carried unanimously.
There's no more questions.
We go into close council at five, four, four P M. Thank you to members of the public who have joined us online and in the public gallery this afternoon. We will see you at the end of November, the last Monday of November for our November council meeting.